Okay.
Now I just got to get to the. Okay, I'll call the Plan Commission Work Session Meeting to order on Tuesday, May 11th, 2021 at 6:03 PM. Janelle, could you please take roll call?
Berto?
Here.
Zaski?
He's here.
Okay, Somway? And then here is your Gretzsmacher?
Here.
Bell is going to be late. Schmitz?
Here.
And Ward is excused.
And I'm here, Janelle.
Yep.
Oh, yeah, I say do.
Okay.
Okay, comments, correspondence and concerns from the public. Do we have any correspondence?
None that I'm aware of.
I didn't have anything.
And we have no visitors joining us?
Nope, this is just staff in the commission.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
I so move.
Second.
Motion by Gretzsmacher, second by Schmitz. All in favor respond with an eye.
Aye.
Posed. Carried. Approval of the minutes as published. Anybody have any questions, comments, corrections?
No.
I'll make a motion to approve as presented.
Second.
Motion by Berto, second by Gretzsmacher. All in favor respond with an eye.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carried.
Nate's joining now, just so you know.
So, okay. Item one, consider a motion to convene into executive session pursuant to Wisconsin Stats 19.85 Sub 1 Sub E to deliberate or negotiate the purchase of public properties, the investment of public funds, or conduct other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. And Wisconsin State Stats 19.85 Sub 1 Sub G to confer with legal counsel for the governmental body who is rendering oral or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation in which it is or is likely to become involved. Motion by Berto.
Second.
Second by Bell. Roll call, Berto, yes?
Bell, yes.
Gretzsmacher, yes?
Schmitz, yes.
Oh, yes.
Okay, all right, so this is just for one thing that we were asked to do at the last meeting. I'm just going to read an email response from Randy. The question was about if we remove residential condominiums as a conditional use and if we, or if we just leave it with a date selected at the end of it, such as June 1st, 2021, that was the question. The difference is if you remove the residential condominiums altogether, that means that every other one that have been built and have been approved become a legal non-conforming use, which is a pretty big change in the zoning status. However, if you add a date such as June 1st, 2021, the previously built units would then remain permitted uses and subject to the conditions that were originally imposed on them. And that means that if they ever need to be rebuilt, repaired, any of those underlying factors, they can do so, but no new residential condominiums can be built in that district after that effective date, such as June 1st, 2021.
So then it was, would be Randy's opinion that we insert a date?
Correct, yep.
Obviously, yeah.
And does that create more problems than we are anticipating? Because a grandfathered non-conforming use is a nightmare.
In my opinion, if you put a date on there, it allows us as staff to handle those one-off situations where someone needs to do a repair or remodel, those kind of things. As long as that date's in there, it shows that it was allowed at one point and they may continue to repair and do that. As far as the grandfathered clause, that's not really a big deal from staff's perspective.
So noted. No further concern.
Okay.
That's it, Bo?
Yep, that's it.
Bo, since this is closed session, can I just bring up the other issue?
Absolutely.
Okay, I'll make a motion. Oh, wait, are you recording, Janelle?
Yeah. Okay.
I'll make a motion. We return to open session at 6:17. Motion by Berto.
Second.
By Bell. Berto, yes?
Bell, yes.
Yes.
Schmitz, yes. Zaski, yes.
Okay.
I have one.
No action to be taken. Item number four, conducting of a Plan Commission Work Session at which amendments to the portions of the zoning code, Chapter 66 of the municipal code that pertain to transient lodging in the B1, B2, and B3 districts, as well as conditional use permits in all zoning districts, and the definition section of the zoning code will be addressed. So I presume you're going to share your screen, Bo, and I think we had just at our last meeting gone through all the permitted uses and we were just going to start on the conditional uses. And I remember Mary Kay talking about liquor stores. So is my recollection correct?
That is correct. So I just want to.
We stopped.
Yep, I just wanted to go through. I believe we were right here, right at liquor stores. We left it highlighted.
Right.
And Mary Kay, was your question on, on why is it a conditional use?
Kind of in a business district? So I thought maybe that I could get some background on that.
Sure. The, the, the history was, from my recollection, is when we created the transition district and because basically it is almost all residential right now that the Plan Commission thought that for the time being, if somebody wanted to put in a liquor store in that area, which is a residential neighborhood right now, that a conditional use permit would be a good idea. That's the, that's the background that I remember.
I don't think I have any backup questions to that.
Okay.
I don't think we should have a liquor store in B2. And like, I understand it being a conditional use, but conditional use just isn't what it used to be.
Right. So just eliminated is your idea, Bell? Nate?
Yeah, I, I think so. I mean, for, for all the demand for liquor stores, there's enough other places they can operate.
But could one, could one even get a license other than under extraordinary circumstances to sell packaged goods?
No, that's easy. That's relatively easy to get.
Well, including hard liquor, not just beer and wine, but including hard liquor. Yes. And I apologize, it's been a long time since I've had to approve them.
Yep, the sale of it is one thing. The consumption on property is much more difficult.
Okay, so if somebody, if we are envisioning that maybe someday there's all these little walking shops, of course I'm pointing, you can't see where I'm pointing, but wouldn't a nice little wine shop there be nice or not?
Are you, are you thinking North Spring Road? Are you thinking back there where we discussed last time?
No, I'm, the, the B2 district is, you know, Mill Road and pretty much Mill Road, and I think it's Parkview.
Right, I apologize.
So you like behind Grasses or next to Roots? You can't go next to Roots, but maybe Chad will sell his house and make it a wine store? If we, and if we're looking to promote a walking area, yeah, maybe a nice High and Wythe might work.
And it might work, and I think if we delete it right now, it can always be added later on. I mean, the zoning code is only set in stone until we decide to change it. But my question, which goes along with my question off to the right that you can't see, I think, is I don't, because a liquor store could fall under general or retail general use. And so I, we might have to prohibit it along with adult bookstores.
Because I think you're talking apples and oranges there, Denise. I, I mean, when you're talking a procurement of a fine wine shop or something that somebody can stop over while walking from the beach to take back to their room or to their, their home, that's not an adult, not the same as an adult.
I know, but if we take it out of conditional uses, so if it's not a conditional use and it's not a permitted use, you have to prohibit it because otherwise it could fall under the permitted use of retail general use.
Which is why I think it's exactly where it needs to be under conditional use, so it's controlled.
And so that.
Nate, Nate, you're, from your position, Nate, if I understand you, you're saying we shouldn't even list liquor stores under conditional use. Is that your feeling?
I guess I, I am, conditional uses do not have anywhere near the teeth that they used to have. It's been eroded so much, I'm concerned about having it there. And to Denise's point about adult stores, I think that there's a very big First Amendment issue in there if we're not very careful. And I am not advocating that we should have adult bookstores there, but I also don't think that we should even approach to impinge on the First Amendment. I think it's, I'm a very big believer in the Constitution, all of the amendments. However, that said, I think there may be a way to accomplish that, although we would certainly want legal advice and to vote a dig on this. I would think it would be reasonable to say that we don't want stores that are targeting to adult goods. I'm not sure how we can, how we can word that.
What I remember from the past is that you cannot necessarily zone something out entirely of your whole community. You have to allow some things somewhere. And hence, you know, in the larger cities, you know, adult bookstores are, you know, out of town, out on the highway or whatever. You have to have a place for them. And so that's, that's the question that I was asking. If, if we don't want it in B2 or B3, you know, maybe we need to prohibit them there, but it could be allowed in B1. And I would want to get Randy Nesbit's opinion on how we deal with something like that to, to refresh my memory and to give some background for the entire Plan Commission and, and how we, how we choose to, to deal with something like that.
Okay, I'm writing a note to ask Randy about adult stores and the zoning laws.
So in, in general scope, Denise, a theoretical example of what you just said would be if the candy store or the brick coffee shop wanted to convert to quote unquote, "a nice wine shop" like Dave is talking about, then it's said in, it would be possible, the way things stand, for them to do that there. Correct?
That's because they're in B3.
Okay, so I guess.
Two.
The, 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 my, my question in this part is the idea of that Mill Road and Parkview area would be a nice place for somebody to be able to get to their home or where they're staying, which in that area would primarily be yacht club or something similar around there, VRBO type of a deal. Do we really, you know, would we really rather have them having that kind of an option, or would we rather have them having the option of going to one of the myriad of places that already sells wine or packaged goods more downtown where they may actually stop and decide to have dinner or sit down at seating and have wine in one of the multitude of establishments that's there already?
I think that one thing I want to keep in mind is what B2 is. It's that transition district. It's not that much space. I think, Dave, you had some really good points about, do you want shops to be there? I just look at that as being a very small district. I've always kind of wondered if we really even need B2 to exist, although I haven't had strong feelings about it in the past. I think it's just that really small area. I, I, I don't think it makes sense to have those sorts of shops there, personally.
I think that's sensible. Dave, were you kind of thinking that as well, or were you thinking it is a good place for stuff?
Well, the, the theory sounds great, but what, what Bo brought up last time was there are a lot of houses, it's all houses, and you have reason to believe that most of them are rentals. So they're probably doing pretty well, and the chance of them selling out probably isn't good. I mean, it just, long run, would that look like the two side streets in Fish Creek? That'd be cool. But it's not something I'm willing to take a sword for. So if we don't want to do it, that's fine.
Yeah, to piggyback off of what Dave's saying, I think right now in this kind of market, you do see a lot of houses in the B2 district right now, most of which are rentals, I do believe. In this kind of market, no one's going to give up that kind of revenue that they can get from a house to try and sell for business. And I really don't know if there's that many kind of walk-in businesses eager to buy a property with a home on it, the values that they have right now. So I think this is one of those points where maybe 10 years, 20 years down the line, you re-discuss it because it could be changing, but right now I don't see that changing.
Yep, that's fine. Would we rezone some of the adjacent property to B1 if they wanted to come in there for that use?
That can get really tricky.
I would think all of them would want to keep their options open. Well, just, just like, I, I, I don't like, I don't like the definition liquor stores. I would prefer packaged goods stores to more definitively define what, what is being done. But I have a question. Has, has a request come in via permit to the village on one of the lower duplexes as what you always refer to as the gokey project on Mill Road?
I haven't seen a permit for that in a long time. I think the only time I saw a permit was in 2019 when I first started, and I followed up with that business owner who applied for that permit and did not want to proceed. I, I haven't heard anything about those lower units since.
I just, I spend a lot of time in Fish Creek. I sell in every town and village. I spend a lot of time in all of them. I, I see no reason to take care of this conditional use. I don't think that under conditional use and, you know, the supposed neutering per se of conditional uses by the state, that this will in any way not be regulated, mandated, you know, within an inch of its life. I, I, I'm also not willing to strike anything at this point in time because I think, I, going back over this list every week, I think I see things being stricken that are being moved into, well, we can put this under general use. Well, it'll be awfully hard to get it back under general use because people will be asking why it was stricken in 2021. So I, I do have, you know, packaged, packaged goods stores, i.e. liquor stores. I, I do oppose striking that from this district. I do.
Mary Care, are you saying we shouldn't have stricken anything from number one as well, in your opinion?
I, I get a little bit nervous when I read through it, and then I hear Bo say, you know, well, we can revisit this again. It's gone, but if, look at it again in 10 or 20 years. I hope I'm not doing this again in 10 or 20 years. No offense meant in any way, shape, or form, Marge. I hope you do this for another 40 years. But I've been, I, I just, I, I worry about the blanket striking and I worry about future legalese going through. Through just having been involved with the law profession for as well as I was. Once you take away something, it's very, very hard to bring it back. And this is a conditional use. It is not a permitted use. But I'm speaking specifically to item A Sub 1. And I'm not going back through at this point in time, but I, I am saying that in retrospect, you know, we would have had longer meetings. We would have had a little bit more discussion, but not everything fits neatly under retail, and that's the conclusion that I came to. And, and we haven't even talked about future trends, you know? I mean, we're talking right now about adult stores, liquor stores. We've got cannabis on the horizon. Where's that going to go?
You've got cannabis here today.
Oh, well, I, it understood, understood.
It's surprising what is, what is legal in the state. It was not today's.
So can we just change it from liquor stores to packaged goods stores and move on?
I would be in favor of that.
So you're asking, I just want some clarity. We'll be taking, we'll be striking liquor stores from conditional use, but replacing it in the conditional use as packaged goods store?
Well, what, what is, what is the consensus?
Well, it sounds like we also need to be deciding on Mary Kay's point about keeping A1 as it originally read on this. Right, Mary Kay? I mean, to me, that's what, you're bringing up a very valid point that we should, do we really want to line through all A1 and start, you know, eliminating it? I think.
We decided that in B2, that there's, there's just no space for that. That's why we struck it. And I don't think she's talking about commercial recreation. I think she's talking about the liquor stores, the new A1. That's, that's what I heard you say, Mary Kay. Am I wrong?
Rob, Rob has the correct intent. When I was going back through our notes and everything that we struck in regards to retail, I took a good, strong look at it and actually did some consultation. And some of these things, even though they are purportedly being lumped under general retail in items we've already addressed, would be very hard to bring back. So that is why going forward, I am being very careful with my discussion and what I decide to strike.
Then in theory, let's just say, for instance, we leave all that stuff, and if somebody comes in with an idea for, you know, for an arcade there or whatever, it's, it's still a conditional use up to us to decide whether it's valid, right? Or whether we want it, correct?
Right, but the problem is with conditional uses is basically as long as you put conditions on it and the developers agree to the conditions, it's a permitted use. There is no teeth in it anymore. And most municipalities have gotten rid of their conditional uses.
Correct, just to, to make sure.
That's not true. I mean, most municipalities have not gotten rid of their conditional uses. They've amended them, but they certainly haven't deleted them. It's still an allowed use under the State of Wisconsin. And you do have to still meet conditions.
Well, that's, that's not what the village attorney discussed with me.
Would Randy be willing to share that opinion with all of the rest of us?
I mean, he said that when Act 67 went through, that we should probably be changing our conditional uses and, you know, taking a look at them at that time, and that simply didn't happen until now.
Well, that answered one of my questions. If he made that comment in 2017 or if he made it now, I, I would honestly have to state that I don't necessarily agree with that, considering I have to read, read legal tones like every week regarding conditional uses throughout the State of Wisconsin.
Let me ask, let me ask, let me ask a question, and hopefully the answer will mean I never have to ask this question again, and I'll understand. What would be the downfall to us, or why would we not simply, you know, as a way to move past this, say, conditional uses? You know, the Village of Sister Bay seeks to follow State of Wisconsin statutes regarding conditional uses as it pertains to the B2 district.
Because we have our own zoning and we get to make the rules.
Right, I, I get that point, but if, 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 if we're simply saying, you know, we seek to consider, you know, any, or, or, you know, we're, I don't know, it just.
Well, maybe you, maybe you should read Act 67, but, Rob.
Well, I think I've got a general scope of it from what we've been subjected.
I know, but if you, if you want to follow what, what the state says, I, I think then.
I'm not, I'm not saying that we want to follow. I'm just saying that we would want to say, you know, we, we, we want to, you know, we're, we're open to considering conditional uses based on on, on state law or statute or something because otherwise this is, you know, if, if it's, if we're doing this because we've got our own laws or stipulations, our own code, if, if my concern is just coming into this fresh is, I get what, I get what you're saying when you say that, Denise, but the fact that you're saying, you know, well, we've got our own way of looking at this and our own view on it, I'm coming into a situation where we've got examples where people are taking exception to that. They're referencing, you know, legally that we don't have bounds for it, et cetera, and.
We do have bounds for it.
I, I guess, Rob, what, what my question would be is referencing state law, what's benefit is that going to be? I mean, we don't have to say that we're going to obey state law. We have to do it. We don't have a choice. I mean, we need.
I, I'm not trying, yeah, I, I'm, I'm not, I don't want to belabor things, you know, as I come on fresh and begin, you know, learning the process everyone's going through. It just seems to me like, you know, I hope we're not being counterintuitive to, you know, we're, we're doing this to benefit ourselves and help somebody in court. So, and if that's, and, and you may come back to me and say, no, that's a, that's a specific part of this. But.
We zoned out hotels out of the B2 district because we were talking about the lots are so small. And if you look at the commercial recreation indoor and outdoor, you know, those are large things. They're probably just as large as a hotel, at least a first floor.
Okay, now, I, that, that, that makes clear where you're at on that.
There's certainly nothing to say that three, three owners wouldn't get together and say, in a market like this, we're mutually selling, and now you have the land in this district to go ahead and allow the use. You know, I, I, I'm just focused purely on liquor stores, and I was of the same opinion as Mr. Schmidt. I was just thinking of, you know, something nice that you could walk from your rental and go out on, you know, the dock by the yacht club or whatever and, and have a bottle of wine. That's simply what I was thinking, and, you know, maybe other quirky things too. And that's when I started looking at everything that we struck and said, gosh, are these all going to be lumped under retail? Because they don't all necessarily fit retail. So that, that's where I'm coming from. That's all.
I wonder if it would benefit the Plan Commission to hear what exactly our attorney's legal interpretation of what we can and cannot do with conditional uses because I know that Marge, Denise, and I have, have heard it quite some time ago when, when it first came up in 2017. Remember being rather appalled by that and thinking, wow, there's going to. Remember Brad being rather appalled by that and thinking, wow, there's going to be a lot of unintended consequences to this. This is really going to change things. And like Denise said, we haven't revisited the code because we just haven't had time to have this much fun in years. So I wonder if there would be, if there would be beneficial to hear that before, because we're going to be changing a number of, number of other things to conditional uses or not. And I'm I am very leery of the unintended consequences on conditional uses, especially because it feels like there's not that much teeth conditional uses. It's, it's not what it was. I mean, I go back to thinking about the subway. Um, that, that came in.
Yeah.
That, that would, unfortunately, was how, how the state law reads, that would happen now.
I have to say continuing that every two years, and a big portion of it is current state law, including conditional use permits and recent case law. So I, I, you know, I'd be more than happy to listen to Mr. Nesbit, give me a refresher, but um, I just did it last year, so.
It might be a little bit different perspective, though, hearing it from a real, realtor side versus hearing it from a site commissioner side. I think it's a little different angle.
I think it would be beneficial if at the next meeting, um, Denise's chair, if you, if you would like to do this, we could bring Randy in the closed session and have this discussion so that we can clear, you know, we can clear any concerns about conditional uses, get clarity on them and what we can do moving forward. But because we're on such a tight timeline, we're coming up on August, which would be that moratorium end date. I think it would be best if we continue having these discussions right now. And moving forward through the B2 and the B3 code, making sure that we're up there. And then once we discuss with Randy, maybe we backtrack and, and, and re-review B1, B2 and B3 after we've heard his, his opinion.
I think we should review all the conditional uses after we hear the opinion. And maybe it's a, wow, we did the right thing, or maybe it's a heated spirited conversation.
I think in summary, we go through B1, B2 and B3 like we have been, listen to legal and then review one more time, B1, B2 and B3, and say, is this what we want to do?
I like how I said it better, but yes, Bo.
I think that's an excellent idea. And Nate, we err on the side of caution. We'll tell you, you can't do something before we tell you, you can do something as realtors. At least, most of us will. But um, I just had one question in regards to that. And that was simply, um, if we do go back over all of this, and it does take more time, do we have the right to extend the moratorium? And I have been asked that by a few different people, and, and I would just like to know if, if I, I think we've been working as quickly as we can, but in the event this needs to be extended, can the moratorium be extended?
The short answer is yes.
Okay. Is that dependent on legal counsel also?
No, I, as long as you can justify why you're extending the moratorium and have a reasonable extension, then you can do that.
Thank you.
So I presume the fact we're having regular meetings gives us a little bit more of a leg to stand on.
What was that, Nate? Sorry, I didn't hear you.
That I presume since we're having regular meetings on the specific topic, I presume that gives us more of a leg to stand on versus just saying we're doing a moratorium and then not doing anything.
Absolutely, yes. From, from an outsider's perspective, if we were just in a moratorium and we weren't discussing any changes and we extending the moratorium, that could be an issue. But, uh, you know, it's very clear, we've been very transparent through this process and changing it that I don't think we'd have any issue arguing an extension. My goal is to get this done by August, and I still think realistically we could do this.
Thank you.
So just for the sake of time, was there general consensus on how we approach liquor stores?
I think it was dependent on how conditional uses. I think we almost have to revisit after we have that.
Look, let me just be, since the sun shined and it didn't snow today. What if we just move liquor stores into permitted use and make it packaged goods?
I don't love that, but I think it's a little bit clearer. I think that it, at least it's admitting where we're putting it. That, that's my concern is that by putting out a conditional use, and we think it's protected, it's not. So I can certainly get on board for that, at least for now.
I'm, I'm not in favor of that, just because it's all residential right now. If things, if things change, you know, if we see a whole bunch of development down there and it's moving in a different direction, I think that would be great. That's my two cents.
I agree with Nate and Dave, simply because I think you are going to start seeing change of use, multiple change of use requests coming that district.
I guess what I'm saying is let's park it there for now, and then I feel like it's a little bit more honest place to put it than saying it's condition use is really what my opinion comes down to. So we put it there for now, and then we need to revisit it after we get I know what the condition uses, because maybe I have a wildly incorrect understanding of the conditional use.
Okay. How about I leave, just revisit on this as it sits? And we'll come back, just so that we don't get confused in the future.
Can you just put discussion moved to permitted use? Because that was the discussion.
Maybe we should have the highlight like a bright pink bow, so we really get a jumping out at us.
Whatever you want.
I'm kidding, I'm kidding. Okay, thank you. We will not forget that.
Okay, let's move on for the sake of time. Okay, permitted, permitted accessory uses, professional offices is highlighted.
I think I had just highlighted that, um, the first time I had gone through B2, trying to figure out what we were going to do with all different offices. So because we've already had that discussion, and we lumped everything under professional offices. I, I think it's okay.
Didn't, did we strike the size of the rooms?
Yeah, we talked about that.
We did. The last one, we did. We went like this.
Yep.
That's what I would like to see on this one as well.
Okay, accessory residential use, so should we un-highlight this as well, or did someone have another comment? I see that someone made a comment saying this needs to be rewritten according to our new definition.
Yes, I wrote that.
I'm guessing from the B1 district.
Yes, because we don't call, we don't call it commercial transient lodging anymore.
Okay, I will do that off camera, just to save time.
Sure. You know what, maybe, maybe we should be, everything that we need to revisit, maybe we should put it in another color.
We'll make it that pink, because you don't miss it. Okay. Front yard setback.
So this, uh, I highlighted this, um, just as a discussion point, if we were all still okay with that verbiage. You know, with averaging. Just a question. If everybody's fine with it?
Yeah, I mean, I, what, I don't think there's any downside, is there? I suppose the downside is, is if the one that's a little bit too close, you've averaged that in, and then it burns down, you can't make them move it back.
Um, I, I guess the only concern that I would have, and maybe it states elsewhere in here, that there would be enough, oh, yeah, it's in the oh, no, that's rear yard setback. If there would be room for a sidewalk, if you're, if you're doing the averaging. Because certainly if, if we can't have everybody walking on the road, I would imagine if or when this transition district does change, that we would want sidewalks for people to walk on for safety, and it's just, it's more inviting. You, those roads are narrow.
Yep.
So I guess I would, I would have to, we'd have to look down to see if there's a place where it talks about that you have to, you have to have a side sidewalk on redevelopment.
I would think that would be quite a discussion, because I don't think you can get a legal sidewalk and keep a legal road in that area, but it's for discussion only.
Okay, under the rear yard setback, eight is highlighted.
Just discussion. Do we have anything that has alley access?
Yes, wouldn't it be that area behind grasses? Wouldn't that be considered an alley? And then all of Parkside would be like technically facing the alley?
That's I remember correctly off the top of my head, I believe that's actually a road. It's not an alley.
Because it's, it's named and dedicated, so noted.
Yeah, it's Parkview Drive.
Do, do we have any alley, I guess I'll ask.
So I mean, eight feet is okay if nobody has any problem with it.
I don't believe there is any alley, Mary Kay. Okay, I will un-highlight eight just for now. All right, and then this is continuing from the last district, the setback area shall be an impervious surface.
What does that mean, Bo?
Does someone on the plan commission want to discuss that from the last meeting?
Sure, well, when we talked about, this goes back to the initial, one of the many WISA proposals that if you've got, you know, the, we don't want people going right up to the lot line with a parking lot or something. We want that to be impervious.
Meaning that, that nothing is allowed to pass through? Is that what you're saying, Dave?
It has to pass through.
Impervious would be dirt, basically. Gravel is a pervious surface. So I mean, you're, you're talking about something that water can flow through freely. And I think the idea is, um, correct me if I'm wrong, Dave, but, um,
Impervious means not flow through. So if you're talking about an area that you want something to flow through, then we're not saying that. Impervious, that, I, I don't, I don't get the part with the surface, because if you're saying impervious, you're saying it's going to prevent something. You know, if somebody's working outside in 100 degree temperatures and they're not getting heat stroke, they're impervious to heat. If somebody puts in a retaining wall that prevents water from flooding a ravine, then it's an impervious wall.
Right, it should be pervious.
It should be perv, it should be pervious in every district.
I think, I think we all got a little tired that night and
Yeah.
thought about that. It should be.
Not, not to shine a bright flashlight, but we may have hit upon the only area I might actually be able to, you know, have some knowledgeable assistance in this project.
Clearly, the issue is we didn't have Rob on last meeting.
Now I get it.
Rob, would it be better to say permeable?
I, I just, and the other part about it is, is the whole surface thing, I, I guess, pervious is a lot better than impervious, I guess that.
So pervious is a word to use for this. Because a pervious surface is water, or a surface that allows the percolation of water into the underlying soil. So that, I would leave it as pervious surface.
That's fine.
Okay.
I will make those changes in the B1 district as well.
Thank you.
Okay, highlighted under building standards is mixed use residential and business.
So didn't we in one of our discussions, talk about instead of saying some sort of conditions on ratios that if you had a mixed use building, the first floor is going to be commercial, period. We don't want to get into sizes.
That's what I was advocating for.
I agreed.
That was the direction I think Plan Commission went in the B1 discussion.
Yeah.
And we did define commercial, right? That's not lodging, right? Okay.
Okay.
There's the sidewalk.
The installation of a five foot sidewalk, yep.
Okay, so my question, when I highlighted that, was twofold. One, going back to the averaging. And secondly, downtown, what are the widths of our new sidewalks? Aren't they six, or are they five?
I think they're six feet. I, I'll have to go back and confirm. I'm going to write a note.
It should be six.
Well, Denise, regarding that, shouldn't that specify in there that you're talking about five feet of width?
No, we all know what it means.
Yeah, you, Rob, to answer your question, you really wouldn't realistically have to put width on that.
That's all I'm asking. Thank you.
And you really, realistically, in that district can't have six feet. I mean, I think I, I'm overly ambitious. I'd love to see someone measure out there and see if you could ten, take 10 feet off on each side and still have a, a public road. I don't think so.
Well, we are gonna.
10 feet altogether, you know what I mean?
Yeah, we're, we're, we're still working on an engineering study to determine what we can do down there.
Well, and where the right of ways actually are.
Yep.
Can you, can you just type a note there? That we're checking the five foot and to check on right of ways. Thank you.
Yep. Okay, as shown above is highlighted.
What, what's shown above? That's, I'm not seeing a picture.
Right. Yeah. So I don't know if that's part of in the illustration section that we need to check on.
Or would that be as per section blank above?
We just need clarification on what that means.
Sorry, I muted myself. Um, okay, we'll clarify on this one. I'll write a note. Okay, building height, number three is highlighted.
Well, we took out hotel and motels as a permitted use.
I'm also questioning the forty-five foot and I wanted to ask a question. So Marina View and the guys up in old, olds, on the old school site, are they thirty-fives or forty-fives?
They're thirty-five.
Okay.
But if we don't allow it, number three can't be, none of that can be in there, just all gets deleted.
Well, that's sort of where I was, okay, okay, perfect.
Okay, so then six feet is highlighted in the width of a sidewalk.
Right, and it said five feet before, so.
Yep.
I think Mary Kay was on to something when she said, I don't know that we can get six-foot sidewalks in that area without really compromising, really just not being able to do it. And I think that a five-foot sidewalk is decently sized in that area, especially when you are so uh, compact in your development in that area. I think that we should, we should get the engineering back before we set that, or if we do, let's spare on the side of five feet and change it to six if we find out it's possible.
Yeah. Do you want me to change the six to five feet for now?
Or highlight it so we revisit it once we have.
Just gonna do that funky pink color, okay. Mixed use development allowed. So this needs to be updated to our new language as well. All right, I will go back and do that. Okay, there's a, a note here, it says, should we eliminate fee in lieu with yes in all capitals?
So I, I did this, should we eliminate and I, but I also think yes, but I don't know who did the yes.
I think this is almost a singular agenda item under, under parking again, which needs to be finalized still, so.
And um, I had a an interesting conversation with Miles Danhausen a week or so ago. And um he brought, because of whatever is going on in Egg Harbor with their parking, I have enough trouble keeping up with Sister Bay. I do not keep track of what goes on in other communities so much. Um, and Miles was saying, you know, we have had this fee in lieu since Bob put it in, we have never set a dollar amount, we have never had anybody pay. Um, and, and we do need to do that when we do the parking code. Um, but he had a great idea, I thought, that you you would only be able to pay a fee in lieu of parking for X amount of spaces. You know, you could not pay, you know, for forty spaces, let's say, or fifty, or you know, whatever that magic number is, but if you were a little bit short, you know, let's say ten or five or whatever, I thought that that was an interesting concept, that it's not just a free-for-all, Bo.
My comment would be if we, if, I, I would agree with that, I think I, I would agree with that concept as well as including that any fee that you put on parking spaces for a project, it needs to be clearly notated as annual fee. Because you might be able to make it a, a two thousand dollar parking space, but with parking so tight in the village of Sister Bay, someone might just pay the two thousand dollars and and we would never see any repercussions, but if you make it two thousand dollars per year, that makes it a very serious consideration.
So I think we should revisit it and, and also have the discussion on limiting on how many, how many you can pay for.
So, and the theory on that would be, a developer comes in, they build something and on the parcel that they build on, they include what we say is the required spaces, but then they want additional, not part of that site and should be able to pay for them?
No, no, this would be if, this would be if a developer wants to build something on a parcel and they can only fit five spaces when they're required eight, so they're short three spaces, that fee in lieu would be three spaces.
It was, it was put in, and I'm not saying that we should keep it or eliminate it, it's just such a bigger conversation um.
I don't think we can stick our big toe in this one, I think we either have to jump in and, and go at it or leave it be because there's, I've got a lot of thoughts and a lot of ideas about this that have changed drastically since the last time we had this conversation, I think that it would be something that we should absolutely do as soon as we can. But for now, let's leave it as it is.
Well, you're saying that we, while we, during the moratorium, we will still talk about it?
I'm not sure if it's something we need to do during the moratorium, but it's something that, gosh, we started talking about that in two thousand twelve, Denise?
Oh my God, so long ago.
And, and we sat down and started the exercise in two thousand eighteen, I think, I don't think that should be stricken though, I think it should be highlighted in pink, that it's something that is coming back and is going to change. Thank you.
Okay. Exemption is highlighted.
Uh, just, I highlighted it, I think, just for conversation. Do we still want to allow the exemption? It's pretty, i- if this district does expand and the beach is so popular, if we allow the exemption, where do they go?
Well, that's a whole nother meeting and a public hearing, so, I, I mean, it's own public hearing.
I don't understand where there's that room for these detached garages there and is that, if the that's not the direction we see this, this district going.
Can you rephrase that, Nate?
Where in B2 is there room for a detached garage? A detached garage is going to be inherently less dense because it's gonna have spaces between the building and attached garage, detached garage, so I don't think that, I, I think that we do strike it.
The real estate is so valuable that it's not feasible to build a detached garage, I agree with Nate wholeheartedly.
Agreed, sounds good.
So we're gonna strike this?
Yep.
Okay. Looks like section ten has been removed. Okay, that was it for B2.
Wow.
Okay. Okay, this is B3 downtown business district. We have mixed use development highlighted.
You can un-highlight it.
Okay. Okay, permitted uses, there are several, several strike throughs. This looks like it's mirroring what was in B1 and then B2 as well.
And again, um, some of that, in going over that at, in, and um, conditional uses, I did have questions. Why, why Dance Studio was still in, and just a, a lot of different questions. But I think once Attorney Nesvet speaks to us, maybe we'll have a better idea of the entire concept.
Okay, physical, physical fitness centers is highlighted. No one is claiming physical fitness centers.
I might have, I might have done it just as, as a question because the, they take up a huge amount of space. And would it just, would it be more appropriate? Um, I suppose you could have a small one, I just wanted discussion, if, if everybody thinks that that would be okay, I don't have a problem with it, it was for discussion purpose only.
It's unlikely to happen there, but if they can make it pay. I don't know that I'm, I guess, whether they can make it or not financially is not our concern, I don't know that it would you know, inappropriate use of the property, doesn't seem likely.
Okay, that, that's fine, if nobody has any issues with it.
Self-service laundry and dry cleaning.
I might have highlighted that also. It's hard to remember what I did, you know, uh, um, three weeks ago.
Laundry mat, does laundry mat fit in B3? I don't think it does. I think it's perfectly fine in B1.
I think so also.
I mean, the B3 district is appropriate for Plan Commission to be very particular about what they want and what they don't want in that district because of its density.
So I, I, I don't see why we would want a physical fitness center there if we don't want laundry and dry cleaning.
So Rob, as I look over on my, on my other screen where I've got the zoning map up, I can, I think you're probably right.
I just have one question, and maybe this isn't appropriate, but I'm thinking of the Marina and I'm thinking of all of the areas within walking distance of our downtown district. Is it appropriate to take out all uses like this where people can actually walk to them and make them have to drive to a different area? Um, I think you're probably going to say yes, because Bo just kind of said that, so if that's the consensus, that's fine.
And I don't know that, if, if somebody would walk with their laundry basket down the street.
That's a whole nother problem, that people are not willing to walk far enough, but.
Yeah.
That's a big hill.
It's good exercise, Mary Kay.
You just want me to r- remove this for now, maybe we come back to it after we discuss and go through it again.
Well, then put it in pink.
Okay. We'll put this one in pink as well.
You know, I, I guess that's my own question, we now have a, a beautiful med spa downtown, which is kind of a self-service walk-to thing. Um, you know, I, I bring my own bag for my groceries when I can, when there's not COVID, so if I had to do my laundry on vacation, I wouldn't mind, but just comments for the next time.
Do, do not most of our hotels have washers and dryers?
Our Marina has one, I believe most hotels do, but don't quote me on that.
I know the Door Hotel, because in the tour, I think what, we saw them, right?
Yep.
I think most of our uptown ones have them actually in the rooms or down the hall, so.
Okay. So accessory residential use is highlighted, this has to be consistent with other codes.
Right, and, and get out the, drop the minimum also.
Yes.
I will do that off camera, but I will remove this. All right, moving down. Okay, this is kind of following the same concept from B2 before with the front yard setback.
And then we need to, in 2A, it needs to become pervious again, right?
Yep.
Do we need to double check that six foot?
Yeah, I'm gonna leave these highlighted, and once I have clarity on the sidewalk with, I'll go through all three codes, all three sections.
It's possible we may want B3 to have a different standard than B2 due to this, the size available, the amount of space available, and also the pedestrian traffic level is going to be far greater in B3 than it is in B2.
Okay. All right, this is a, an interesting one in the B3 district about the zero-foot side setbacks.
And this is, uh, I think we talked about this, um, Nate, Nate and I, um that it's the building that can only have the portion of the building. And that's as, that would be like Third Avenue in Sturgeon Bay, but when I think about that, none of their, all those buildings are flat, have flat roofs. Because I think one of our other conversations was too, that if, if you're gonna have a pitched roof and an overhang, you have to, you can't have a zero setback.
Back for drainage.
So maybe this should only be.
So because it's not technically possible, doesn't mean that we don't want the, the spirit of it in there. That, that, so somebody does come out and say, gosh, I, I want to do this zero side yard setback, I want to get the density up in the B3, which I'm all, all for, increasing density in B3. We can do this, it's going to take an enormous amount of money and enormous amount of work, but we can do a zero yard side setback. I think you're, effectively what you're saying is for the foreseeable future, it's not technically possible. But that doesn't mean someday it may not be.
Right. But it should, but it should only be for the building because we're talking about, you know, you can't have the parking within the setback.
Yes.
Oh, okay, right.
So we need to clarify.
How do you want to do this, zero-foot side setback for buildings? For primary.
For the portion, um, for the building only. And does there have to be a six-foot side setback? Then on the other side, that kind of makes no sense. If you talk about Third Avenue, they're all butted up together.
So you need this if you don't have the zero clearance.
What was that, Dave?
So are we, we're dealing with two situations. We, we're gonna allow a zero setback if the building designs are compatible. But if we don't have that, we still want to make sure we maintain the six foot.
So as that reads, somebody could have a zero foot setback and then the next building would be setback six feet. So I don't, I don't know that that's something we'd really want. We'd want them to. Know, but I think that's kind of the goal of this someday. Have that dense downtown that has got budding buildings.
Okay, so really then strike B and C and just say there's only A we want to talk about.
Uh, do we want to let? How do we feel about a six foot between two buildings? I mean, I guess. What's the reason for the side yard setback in the first place? One is to not encroach upon your neighbor. And two is to have the, the feeling and the spacing of the village.
And we wanted it, and by making it a pervious surface, we didn't want driveway to driveway. Or parking lot to parking lot.
Right. And I, well, I think E might still apply if they don't. If they're going to have a pitched roof and overhang, you need that three feet, you need a place. For the water. Don't you, don't we?
I think so.
So I think E stays there.
Yeah. That still tightens up the buildings.
Right.
But how do you define that? So people know exactly what we were discussing and what it means, because right now it, it kind of doesn't make any sense. If I were coming in as a layperson and reading it.
Both parties can agree to a zero side, zero foot side setback for the. For the buildings only. If the building designs are compatible.
So define compatible for me.
Well, if compatibility would be if, if they have matching roof heights, if they are.
That needs to be defined.
Do we need to say that? I mean, do we need to tell people you can't build two buildings that are going to have a horrible negative impact on each other? I mean, is that? Is that something we need to regulate?
Well, it says that the plan commission may grant, oh, may grant a waiver.
So this isn't 100% guaranteed, plan commission would still be able to review plans before they make that determination.
Which is the architectural control aspect, which is what we have. A lot of control over.
So you could see a set of plans, Mary Kay. With, with the language written now and determine if they are compatible or not before you allow it.
But that, and that's why it's so kind of convoluted, because you would have to have two. Adjoining property owners, two separate people. That do a development at the exact same time. Otherwise, the first person who decides to put up something and does the zero. Setback, then. The adjoining property owner, his project's going to come up under much more scrutiny than to be compatible with the first one. So it's.
We've already got DCICF giving up something for the skip stone, et cetera, property. So I can see this kind of co-op. Operation going forward. I think that just so somebody understands it, somebody doesn't misinterpret it. Denise, you referenced the, um, architectural standard, if I'm correct. Could we, could we put in there C section, whatever it is, so people have to go back to that, so they understand. Oh, I don't only need to do these two things, I could still get kicked out based on, you know, uh. Section three and going and looking at this other. Area that is not referenced here, because I'd just be like, well, if I do this and this is okay, what do you mean? I can't get this. You may grant it, well, under what conditions will you grant it?
So how about after the sentence on A? We notate and say, see illustration, and we will have to come up with an illustration. Because from my. Interpretation in the history of. Of this. Particular part of the code, it was to look like Third Avenue.
I work on. Not an ideal situation here in terms of impervious or anything else. I just transferred the old book world bu- building last month.
I, I don't understand. What do you mean?
Um, just, just talking in terms of, you know, the fact that something like that with, with zero lot line and everything. It, it, they, it does have its problems, you know, in looking to not create future problems. And you're going back to the 1880s on most of these buildings. I would hope to think that we're talking, you know, 2021. But again, I totally agree with the zero lot line. That is what the future is. It's just, it's not without its problems. So the better. We can define it for people now and say, okay, if you want this, you might have to jump through these hoops. I, I think it's better.
Well. Eighteen eighties, our architectural code is turn of the century German and Scandinavian. That, that's the criteria we're supposed to follow for architectural control.
Which is why people should be referring. Back to that section in the zoning code.
Okay.
I have a question on Mary Kay's point about in terms of a layman looking at this or a late person looking at this. So when we say both parties can agree to a zero foot side setback for the buildings only, are we essentially saying that? Both. The way this is written, both parties could agree that their buildings would. Be right up against each other?
Yes.
Okay, so my question is. How do we assume that this would only be an issue between two parties? What would be preventing somebody?
Put, put in the word adjacent in between the in buildings for the adjacent buildings only.
But I mean, it could be. If, if somebody, if a single person buys three. Adjoining properties. And then. Decides to. Put three structures up there. That all. Abut each other.
Well, first of all, most likely if they bought three separate parcels, they would probably do a CSM and combine them into one.
Okay, I'm just, I'm. If, if, if you guys feel certain that, that what you're referring to there would only pertain to two separate parties and no more. Or, or whatnot, then, then that's fine, like.
I think, yeah, the word adjacent helps it a lot. Okay.
Okay, PUD allowed.
Word, I hate PUDs. I'll just say it.
Could, I, I remember Denise, when you were. There was a plan meeting two years ago and the person who wanted to buy the Casperson party. Property wanted to do a PUD and you explained what a PUD did. Can you give me? In a very short, what's a PUD versus a conditional use?
A planned unit development, um, allows. Huge. Um. Variances from the code. You negotiate the whole entire project. You don't have to, um. It, it's up to the. The whim of the plan commission and the developer. It's, it's a give and take situation. And I believe that it, they are just so convoluted. And there is nothing truly clear because you can vary from almost everything. And I think that's just a bad. Policy, period.
So, so what I'm hearing then is that. With a conditional use, you still have to apply, you still have to conform to village standards. With this, you say, you literally have a clean sheet of paper.
Essentially.
Yes.
Got it. Thank you.
PUDs are essentially just one-off projects where you have a unique idea and a concept, but you know that that project isn't going to meet. Many code standards, um, per the district. So this being the B three district, which already has pretty lights, um, setback requirements, building requirements, a, a PUD is. Very difficult or could put the plan commission in a difficult situation.
Well, are we, are we, we required by law to allow? Them?
No, plan commission makes the decisions for planning, planned unit developments. They can request it, you can deny it as long as you have justification.
Why? And then it has to go to the board too. It's just. It's, it's just, to me, it's a nightmare.
If, if nobody likes them, why do we even allow them to exist?
From my experience, PUDs are very successful only when they deal with small lot residential projects. If you're trying to. Create some type of, um, smaller home shared yard kind of projects where you don't already have. A section in code for that, that's really where PUDs stand out. Or if they're, you know, projects that are very much needed for community welfare, um, such as, you know. An EMS or a hospital, something like that. That's where PUDs thrive. Um, but plan commission, I think in the past Denise, and I don't think I was here for a PUD. Um, they've been used for other projects like condominiums.
I think that Denise, maybe some of your apprehension about PUDs has been the, what I would consider the overzealous use of them in past times. That, uh, maybe they're not as bad as they seem because the ones that we represented were connected with a lot of other. Less than fantastic outcomes on projects. That's a pretty diplomatic way of saying that.
Well, how about we put it in pink? And I will re, and maybe we should all read the section. It's not very long. Um. It's an overlay district. Which I don't know. Exactly. Where it overlays. It's only five pages long.
Why would it automatically say allowed though? To me, that's a, a bad word to have in that section when it is. Subject to provisions of a different section. To me, that, that word should be stricken.
I, I, I understand where that's coming from. It's just essentially saying, and I'm not defending it, but it's just saying PUDs are allowed in this district. It's not worded that way, but that's what that's interpreted, interpreted as.
But Rob even had to ask what a PUD was, so shouldn't we at least spell out planned unit development in that area?
It's right.
I mean, if I'm reading through this for the first time, trying to figure it out, I'm, I'm, I'm grappling with it.
Well, it says PUD allowed, and then the plan commission and the board of trustees may vary the building setback requirements, subject to the provisions of the planned unit development requirements. In section sixty-six point zero three four one. So it's, it shows you what PUD is and where the section is that defined it.
Let me, let me ask you a question on that, Bo. Then if everyone pretty much generally agrees. They prefer not to deal with planned unit developments. And it's already there to be referenced in another section. If somebody's so interested in having a, presenting us with a planned unit development, why don't we just let them find the requirements in another section and not even? Refer to it in this. Well, what favors are we doing ourselves by? Detailing that.
Well, it just shows that a PUD is allowed in this district. That's really what this is emulating.
But it only.
You're basically telling me.
May, it only may be allowed. It's not, it's not fully an allowed use. Again. If I'm reading this as a first time person going through our code, I'm saying, why, what is a PUD? Why isn't it spelled out here and why, why wouldn't I put PUD in the second part? I, I, it's just, it's. It's not written like a zoning code should be.
And can we also just put the word may be allowed?
Just like that.
Without a capital A on allowed.
So the, the overriding consensus then. Despite the majority of the comments would be that. It would be wonderful in certain circumstances to have a planned unit development in downtown. That's what I'm hearing.
Sometimes you need a square peg for around the hole.
Okay.
I mean, that, well.
I guess where I'm, where I'm coming from is if, if, if I'm. If, if I'm wanting to. Push the envelope on something that. To Denise's point would just be. A lot of turmoil. Before getting to the point of. Not flying. Why do I want to invite that and not let somebody find their way to it in another section? I mean.
I don't really know what, what you mean, because it references section.
I, I, it just, it strikes me as peculiar that something people's have a general. You know, that, that can be so problematic. That we're shining a light on the fact that we may consider something that's so problematic. Help possibly, if, if we may consider it. Doesn't the fact that. You know, the provisions of the. Plan unit development requirements in a separate section. On their own. Does, does section sixty-six point oh three four one clarify that? Plan unit developments may be permissible. And that if somebody was so intent on wanting. To have one, or if for a particular parcel, we were so intent on wanting to go that route. That we could simply find our way there without advertising to somebody canvassing our codes that, oh, by the way. We'd be open to considering this.
This commission has come under considerable attack over the last four years for the ambiguity of the entire zoning code. I don't think making it more difficult is, is the answer here.
Right, right.
If you have a different route to, to follow, I'm, I'm more than agreeable to hearing it, but, um, I. Again, it's. It, it's our charge to make this clear and concise and to not allow legal challenges that it's ambiguous.
Okay.
Why don't we revisit? The planned unit development? Why don't we all? Write ourselves a note, read those five pages in the code, that particular section. And come back. And come back to this conversation because to have a PUD, if you have a residential PUD, it must be one acre in size. A business PUD. Or commercial, I guess we would change that too, is one and a half acres. And a mixed compatible use is one and a half acres. So we are talking about some larger parcels of property, but. You know, we could go on and on, but I think we need to read it and then have a more informed conversation.
And, and could I just ask that for that discussion, if any other parcel other than the former Casperson parcel? Fits that requirement, if, if any. Parcel that, that fits the, the density acreage size could be identified, then we'd have a clearer picture.
Good point.
That's excellent. That's an excellent point, Mary Kay.
I bet you Nate could pull that up right now in the GIS and tell us the size of the lot.
Which, which lots one I got the GIS of over another, another stream here.
I know you do. The Casperson property.
Okay, um.
Well, what if ecology, um, got together and bought the Kelstrom? Well, what if ecology um got together and bought the Kelstrom Building and put those two parcels together? Would that be an acre and a half? I believe that was tried a couple of years ago, wasn't it?
Well, that whole block nearly became one parcel.
Two point, two point four-one acres.
And that does not include Annika's house, right?
No, Annika's is one point four-three acres.
It's on a separate parcel.
Yeah, it's a separate adjoining parcel.
So, so maybe we just do need all of, all of these potential parcels for PUDs identified for, for our discussion.
Okay, I'm writing a note now.
Right, there can't be a lot of them. B three is pretty small.
So you're looking for every lot that's over an acre in B three?
Yep.
Yeah, what you do is you draw a shape on it, you export it as a CSV, and you sort it by the size, and you come up with your list pretty quick.
Okay.
I think I highlighted mixed use that can be unhighlighted.
Building height is highlighted.
That, that's mine again. Forty-five, forty-five feet.
Hotels are allowed in the B three district, so.
They are, but do you want a forty-five footer in B three? After what happened when you let Marina View go up?
Marina View is only thirty-five feet.
That's thirty-five.
That's why I said you don't want to go to forty-five. If you get.
I, I believe the door.
Anything is allowed to be thirty-five feet.
Yeah, the thirty-five foot.
No, it's the forty-five that I'm talking about, not the thirty-five.
The forty-five is only for hotels, motels, on hotel motel condominiums.
I, I understand that. And if you want to build one, make it thirty-five feet.
As much as I really like the concept of going higher, B three is not a great place to do it because your blocking view is at forty-five feet. You're sticking it right between the, the rest of the village and the water. I see Dave's point.
Are you arguing against yourself, Nate?
I, I'm, I am fine with that, Denise. If, if there's a valid point, I, I've been wrong. I think one or two times I've heard you wrong, too, but that's.
This is also recorded, so that's good. We can hang on to that.
If you're looking at it in terms of what is the impact going to be, you're lining it up, I mean, you do the sightlines from the rest of the village, and that's.
Yeah, I mean, the Confectuary Store and Grasses decide to put a hotel there, um that's, that goes to forty-five, that would be awful.
I guess if you look at the Casperson, though, the Casperson would work because you're not, you're going to block some swamp from seeing the bay there.
So you'd need an overlay, just like Boca Raton or a- and anywhere else like that where y- you, you don't build on the water side. If it's there, you can have it. If you're building something new, you can't. A wa- waterfront district overlay, I don't know what you'd call it, but that's a whole nother discussion.
Sounds good the way you said it.
I, I, I like that, Mary Kay, um and I think overlay districts are a solution to a lot of our challenges. Right, because what might be good on one side of the street definitely wouldn't not be appropriate on the other side. So.
Sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off, but I know that people on the other side, like the Door Hotel, a new hotel owner, would be in favor of protecting his view, you know, their view by creating an overlay district on the, on the waterfront side.
Well, I think, I think you, you delete all of this under the building height, and then you have to create the waterfront overlay district, which is on the east side of the road.
I, I, I'm not follow, I, I'm, I'm trying to, can you explain yourself, Bo? Because I'm, I'm, I'm not getting my head around what the owners of the Door Hotel wanting to protect has anything to do with what we're talking about.
Well, what you're talking about is potentially having buildings across the street between the water and the Door Hotel that could potentially go up to forty-five feet as the code was written before. So by creating this overlay district, a waterfront overlay district on the east side of the road potentially protects our, our village, you know, businesses on the other side from losing their view.
I think the other thing to keep in mind there is, you know, I, I always point out to people who are not from Sister Bay, when they go take pictures of the goats on the roof, I said, turn around, you've got a twenty million dollar view. The goats are cheap. Um and that's the view that we really need to do is because we spent all that time, money, and effort. Um well, I, Denise, I think, has spent more time than anybody else here, but on that, but we, we made that investment. We need to protect that.
Agreed.
There's really twelve lots in B three that I think this doesn't work for. The rest of them, more or less, it's forty-five feet works, in my opinion. But there's twelve lots where it would just be awful. And that's going to be on the other side of forty-two.
Yeah. Okay. Overlay districts are not necessarily difficult to craft.
No. Do you want me to un-highlight mixed use here?
Yes.
Okay, I'm going to leave the six highlighted. And then fourteen feet is highlighted for.
Right, because I think didn't, isn't it like twenty feet from the curb is the setback?
Yeah.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure about that. So I'm sure the six and the, the six is correct then.
Okay.
But we'll still check.
I'm going to leave it highlighted just so I can remember.
Okay, I just didn't understand this. Minimum projection of four feet over a sidewalk. What, why would we? Why would we allow that? That makes no sense to me.
Good point.
Well, it's for a canopy awning pergola or similar weather protection. No less than four feet over a sidewalk to be defined as same. I, I don't know who, what, why is that in there? It makes sense. I mean, I, I believe in, I believe in weather protection. Are, are you saying you'd like a, a higher minimum, a lower minimum?
I, I just don't, I just, I guess, I don't envision that as being a great thing. Um, not that it's a bad thing, but our sidewalks are only six feet wide. And in the winter, you know, you have a trackless going down, blowing snow.
Well, is this, is this the public sidewalk or just a sidewalk that's on the property?
Well, it says, or other pedestrian space. So maybe that would, maybe that's the clarification that we could use, that it's not over the public, it's over a private. Maybe the entrance to their front door is their sidewalk. That would be fine. I read it as over the public sidewalk.
Way I read it, too. Do, do we need to take out other pedestrian space there, then? I mean, I'm picturing the problems that you have or had with the Grasses to Go sign, trying to do snow clearance under there. But then I'm thinking of Chop, which has its private sidewalk in and could easily have a canopy if they so chose.
Yeah, yeah. I think it's just defining what sidewalk, and then I'm good with it. Or other private pedestrian space.
Okay, this needs to be updated to our previous codes. Okay, so this was taken out.
Well, yeah, a minimum of four to six feet, a, a minimum is a minimum. It's not a range.
I would agree. Just keeping it at six feet is a good idea. Common areas.
Well, you have to highlight the parking for future discussion.
The Fee and Lou?
Yeah.
Yeah. Oh, so I highlighted this because I don't know that this is being done. Copies of any applicable covenants, restrictions, and conditions set shall be recorded and provided to the village. I- is that happening?
I don't believe we do that right now.
So we.
All common areas, walkways, driveway, drives, courtyards.
We get their, um, their covenants. And we have.
We don't get them prior to the zoning permit approval.
No, we get them, well, yeah, we get the covenant, the Plan Commission always reviews the covenants and, and restrictions. And then you can't approve them, but they, the Plan Commission reviews them.
I don't recall ever doing that.
Correct.
I don't think we had a subdivision created since um Stony Ridge, so that would be two thousand nine, eight?
No, we just had it with Britt Uncafer. With condominiumizing.
Remember, and with Gary Weesa's condominium and the old school property condominium? Well, thi- this doesn't state condominium disclosure documents. It states covenants, restrictions, and conditions, which I would define as a subdivision. So you need to state condominium disclosure documents.
Will you get the, the covenants and restrictive covenants and all that stuff? You see them before you approve them for that.
We do present that.
Those are all included, provided. So that's, that's when, that's when Amy Sullivan came to the Plan Commission.
Yeah.
Then they were doing the condominium, and I had all kinds of issues with the parking that they had allotted in their covenants that was not correct, but the Plan Commission couldn't do anything about it, and it didn't follow the code.
Yeah, because Randy said that that's a private matter. But you could have not approved the plat.
Based on the covenants?
Yeah.
Well, nobody ever told me that because we shouldn't have done that if they weren't going to fix the appropriate parking for each of the parcels.
That's my understanding. I certainly could be wrong, but that's what, because I was told that you don't have any authority over the, the covenants. Remember when you were reviewing Marina View covenants?
Yes, right.
I don't think any developer would record covenants before they were, I, I, I mean, you have to have at least draft approval, but I, I mean, knowing attorney's fees and the fact that you'd have to re-record with the Register of Deeds, I don't like that language, shall be recorded, because I'm not sure we always see them recorded. I think we see draft copies. I, 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 I think we've seen them both ways.
Didn't, didn't you and I change something, Janelle, when I stumbled across something? And now they have to pay for the fee for the recording to the village to make sure that it gets done?
They do because there were a lot of people that weren't recording them. And so now we require that they provide the plat as well as the covenants to Heidi. Recorded with the Door County Register of Deeds or a separate fee paid to the village for same? No, it's recorded. They pay, they reimburse the village for whatever recording fees are incurred at the Register of Deeds office. So Heidi physically gets a hard copy, a recordable version, and takes both of them down to the Register of Deeds office and sees that they're recorded. So Heidi records them. As village clerk, or if she's not available, then I do as deputy clerk. Do you then, Janelle, want to take a good look at that last sentence with Bo and, and see if that reads properly or correctly? And I would also include condominium disclosure documents.
Okay.
I'm going to highlight this purple.
Their zoning permit, unless and until we have the plat, we know the plat is recorded and that the covenants are recorded.
Okay, well, I would, I would like some verbiage in there that if we are allowed to deny something because they are not appropriating parking or they are not following zoning code, that it can be denied. That, I think that has to be in there. I was unaware of that. I brought up all those questions at the time with Amy Sullivan, was told I have nothing to say about their documents, but it was in, uh, it didn't follow the code, what, what they wrote. So the covenants have to follow the code.
Well, the plat has to abide by the code. Their condominium documents don't have to.
I, I know, but in the condominium documents, they did not appropriate the right parking spaces to each of the uses.
Yeah, and it's my understanding that you don't have the authority to do that.
But that's the zoning code.
But wasn't the parking delineated on the plat?
No.
Like the plat, the way the parking was delineated on there, you could have refused to approve the plat, is my under.
No, because it was all the parking. They didn't.
Let's see if this lies then. Just, just add, uh, permits can be denied if these documents do not meet minimum parking and zoning code requirements and, and see if it, see what Randy says. He's going through this whole thing anyway. But I think we should mention parking specifically, since that has been an issue.
Yes. So if you can add parking and zoning code requirements.
Yeah, and you probably want to put in there, ask Village Attorney Bo so that he knows.
Okay, and then the last thing was stricken.
Well, that's because in the B three, all of that, I thought it was stricken already. Um, I thought we did that on a public hearing after downtown was, was done, because all of, all of that went away. Nobody's paying taxes in B three anymore on rights of way, because the DOT.
Well, remember Denise, that's the one that came up because of Betty Wiltsey's building?
Right, and that's why we still got rid of it. It didn't, it didn't matter. I thought we already had a public hearing on this and amended it.
Well, there was something where this had to stay in there because otherwise they didn't satisfy some requirements.
I know, but they've already sold.
Yeah.
So it doesn't apply anymore specifically to them.
Yeah.
So we'll, we'll just leave it out then.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay.
What, could you go to the opening paragraph of this section? Before we conclude? To. The point that Mary Kay articulated earlier about referencing the particular. Section of. How we're supposed to look architecturally. Do we need to make that clear? In here? You know, the character appearance and operation of any business in the downtown district should be compatible with any surrounding areas. Um, the. The goal of the village is to strengthen the downtown district as the quote unquote heart of the community. Um. Do we need, you know? Is that an? The character appearance and operation of any business, is that? Do you see your similar point, Mary Kay, in this paragraph that this would be an opportunity?
I do, I think it can be. At the end of that sentence, say C section. Blank, 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 what Denise is. Referencing in the architectural reviewer characteristics.
I think it should be the first bullet point. Or one of the bullet points. Please uh, see section four thousand Architectural Guide.
There you go.
Oh, get to that already.
But it doesn't say where to find it, that's, that's the whole thing, we we need to tell people where to find it.
Yeah. Thank you.
Four thousand. And it's called Architectural Guide.
Okay.
Was that it? Was that the end of B three?
That's the end of B three.
Okay, um, I'm just going to take, I know it's after eight o'clock, I'm just going to take a couple of minutes here, um. So. In the. The redlined version. Um, that I. That you guys printed off for me, conditional use permit was, you know, listed all throughout the code. Now, do we have to, do we have to go back to that and? And see how the changes that we've made in B one, B two and B three affect every place that it's on all those other pages?
Um, yes, we'll have to go through the whole entire zoning code to make sure that it reads what we're changing.
Okay, so you are going to have to upload. The whole entire redlined code now. Correct?
Correct, yep, I'll have to do that as another attachment, like the, like the B one, B two and B three.
Okay, so we will have, um. We will talk about, um. Having Randy chime in on conditional uses, which will help us then go back and review some of this. Um, we're going to read the P U D. And then, um. And we'll work out a waterfront overlay district, correct? That's on the to-do list.
Yep, I have a list.
Okay, so for.
Parking and parking fee.
Yep, parking, confirm the sidewalk with. Identify all the parcels in the B three that could be a P U D. Get Randy a discussion for conditional uses.
Okay, so then what is, um, when is our next meeting?
June first. At six o'clock.
But we have one for, yep, June one, six P M.
Now, what I feel for the next agenda then is a closed session. Discussion regarding the provisions of sixty-six point oh three four one that pertains to P U Ds. And review of that report, discussion regarding the potential for creation of a waterfront overlay district. Anything else on that agenda?
Well, should we just deal with all of these other miscellaneous things and how they may impact all the things that we have to go back? And however long that takes, and if it doesn't, you know, take two hours, then we just had a a short meeting. And then dive into the rest of the code on every place that conditional use is. Is listed, and that basically is going to be pretty easy to determine because we've already defined it. In the the business districts, right? So that should be.
Okay, so then add review of all the sections.
No, no, I think that will be. For the. Another meeting, let's get through these things at the next meeting.
Yeah, that gives me more time to get, I can try and anticipate those moves and go through it and highlight those sections.
They're already highlighted.
Oh, in the redline version with all C P, okay.
Yes.
You want to review B one, B two, B three again, or are you done with that?
No, we we have to, after Randy's opinion, we have to review that again.
Well, I'll put that on the agenda then.
Okay.
Okay. And then it'll be, so first it's discussion regarding P U Ds, then it's creation of a waterfront overlay. And then it's discussion regarding the provisions of B one, B two, B three.
Right, and the closed session with Randy.
Yeah, closed session.
The permitted and stricken permitted uses, I'd like to see definitions as to how that will read for retail. I I have not seen how that will read yet, so before I can approve anything, I'd have to see how that is going to be. Um, conjoined and condensed and what's going to happen to the uses that are dropping off.
Okay, I don't think I know specifically what you're asking, Mary Kay.
Everywhere that we've gone through in every B district.
Right.
Where there've been allowed uses stricken and then some random. The like dance studio allowed to stand. On its own, I would like to see how retail reads, if it's all going to be lumped together and conjoin everything that's been stricken. So I'm making sure that nothing is being dropped out purposely that could come back to say be a problem.
Okay, so you want to see a more cleaned up version of those permitted uses on?
Exactly.
Okay, I can do that for you, I can make that a separate document.
Okay. Is there a motion to adjourn at eight ten?
So moved.
Motion by Zoski.
Second.
Second by Schmitz, all in favor respond with an eye.
Eye.
I opposed, carried, thank you everyone, good meeting.
See you.
Thanks, everyone.
Night.